To allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, [S01][S01] one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Sorry Scott.
I can't stop and I don't know.
I know that's what I was like.
Well, good morning everybody. Uh first up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Move to approve the consent agenda. Second, move seconded for the discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Now.
Mr. Chair, do I, do I need to say that you've all been here thinking?
Yes, because there's only three of us here. We, I do need.
So, okay, okay.
Yeah. We went through that. We, we went through that with uh. It's been years ago. There was something, remember that seat day? We had to bring, we had to bring it back up for consideration. Because the chair didn't vote when there was only three. I don't think, I don't know if I was chair or Lauren was chair.
He was a two one, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I don't remember who was chair. It was a two one vote. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. But there was something goofy about it. I think Lauren was chair. I think it was Lauren's fault. But, so just to be safe, I. There's only three of us here. We. So, um, yeah. It's Molly's fault this.
Are we really done till ten fifteen?
Yes.
Oh, or ten thirty actually. No, ten.
No, ten fifteen gets public hearing. And I would guess that. There's a possibility that the ten fifteen public hearing might run into our break, so.
So I would say just take a break.
Take a break.
And be done.
Take a break, yeah.
Right?
Right.
All right, maybe I will be.
It all makes sense.
No. No, at least hold people.
Yeah, because I know.
I, I, I dropped the ball. Molly didn't drop the ball. I dropped the ball and kind of, I didn't see that. Yeah.
You're supposed to catch that shit.
Well, and I didn't notice it till just now, but if the public hearing was set, it's hard to change.
Yeah, probably could have said, we could have threw something in there, but I can't remember why. There was someone that couldn't show up or, I don't know.
Well, and that public hearing was probably already set, so yeah.
You're just looking to get fired, aren't you?
Can you start impeachment proceedings on yourself? That's the question.
All right, gentlemen. I'll go see how everybody's doing. Hands is out today, so I'm gonna see how my office is doing.
You wanna, you wanna shut audio or video down on that?
Oh.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Just kidding.
Yeah, she's trouble.
She's good with it.
Constantly.
That's right. She's a professional.
Nice to have you around.
We're still training.
Not fast.
Close up, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for the Hart variance request. Kim Dylan, Dylan, Patty Antip here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant for this request is very hard. This planning area would probably is is clearly our rule. The zoning is GRP. We did receive a various marriage application by Mr. Hart on October 28. And they're seeking the marriage for the consideration of a special permit that would allow an auto lease of farm machinery repair shop that would exceed 5,000 square feet of floor area on the subject property. The proposed shop would be operated by the applicant's nephew Skip Hart. And should this marriage be approved, it would allow the applicant and the proprietor to be opportune to apply for a special use permit for site. You did see that the proprietor shared with you five PowerPoint slides. This use then is defined as a major commercial business, the definition of which is retail service and service businesses with building sizes more than 5,000 square feet or more than the nature of land. Following conversation with Skip Hart, it became apparent that the facility would be used to repair cars, pickup, semi-trailer trucks, a large farm equipment. Farm equipment repairs classified as agriculture support business, which is allowed in GRP with an SUP. Personal vehicle repair, repair pickups is classified either as a minor or major commercial business. Minor commercial business, building size less than 5,000 square feet, allowed in GRP, again with a special use permit. Major commercial business is not allowed. Originally, we determined that the egg support business and the minor commercial business, they're both allowed. However, operating both of the properties prohibited because that would be more than two primary uses and that is not allowed on the property because already there's a residence on the property. Having two more primary uses would not be allowed. We determined that the floor area utilized for the proposed use would frequently exceed 5,000 square feet. And as such, we suggested that the applicant combine the personal vehicle repair, the pickup, the semi-trailer trucks and the farm equipment into one. Over 5,000 square feet may would be a major commercial business, unfortunately would not be allowed. However, the opportunity was for adherence and that's why we're here today. I mentioned that this in GRP, major commercial businesses are not allowed. On page two, we have the purpose, applicability and procedure for variance. The location of this property is it's seven miles southeast of Powell. It's just on the north side of Highway 295, has a dress of 397 lane 13. You see location map, Mr. Chairman, on page three and figure one. We have a whole history of the permits on the property. That July 31 of 2015 building permit, that is for the shop building that we're currently talking about. And that is approximately 8,768 square feet. So when that was issued, it was basically issued for personal. On page four, we have under the staff note regarding existing use, we basically have conversations that we had with Patty, myself and other staff with Skip Hart. Terms of neighbor land use, middle of page four, let me way uses are primarily agriculture. There are several residential and residential vacant land uses close by. Terms of site characteristic, you see that in figure three, we have a site plan drawing. The house is towards the south, the shop that we're talking about. Shop of the building of interest is towards the north of that diagram. As I mentioned, it's on Highway 295. Existion shop is almost 9,000 square feet. There's some additional buildings on the property. This property is in an ag overland district. Of course, that gives you a chance to address any ag concerns that you might have either affecting the use of use affected ag. On page eight, we have the legal notices. So we published two legal notices in the power of one on November 16, one on November 30. We sent certified mailing out to neighbors on November 8 of all this year. We notified agent that might have an interest. Fire protection district said they could provide fire protection. Treasurer said the taxes are payable. We had a response from YDoc talking about residential access and then field access. I believe the field access would be changed should this proceed as an official use. Game and Fish had no concerns, no other responses. Mr. Chairman, at the bottom of page eight, we have, I said, we have no public comments. We have received. We have received two letters that I believe were received today and and those were shared with you. I believe we've had a chance to see those letters. On the top of page nine, we have the variance approval standards. Of course, there's there's four conditions and all those must be met to grant a variance. I'll I'll try to be brief, Mr. Chairman. I won't read the applicant's comments because we summarized that in the staff report. We also shared with you that that their response. But I will briefly state our responses. One is the first criteria is there are special circumstances or conditions peculiar to land building or structure. Our response is there are no special circumstances or conditions which are peculiar peculiar to land building or structure and that don't apply generally to land or buildings in the neighborhood. The applicant has approved building permit for the structure for personal use of farm shop, not for commercial use. The applicant has the ability to use it just with the approved permit. And of course, he, they have the ability to use the land as well for other reasons. Second criteria is there are circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the rights would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of land or building or structure. Again, our response is there are no circumstances that would deprive the applicant of reasonable use. Should we follow our legs? Again, because the applicant has a building permit for the shop for personal use can use it as such. Number three, granting of the variances is necessary for the reasonable use of the road. Again, our response is granting of the variance is not necessary for the reasonable use of land or structure. I've mentioned about it. Number four, granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purposes intended regulations. It will not compromise integrity of land use plan. Our response is in regard to the regulations is granting of the variance is not in harmony with the general purposes intended of the regulations because major commercial business use is prohibited in the GRP zone district. Mr. Chairman, we have some findings. We have some photographs that I took. We have the applicant's application. They're addressing the conditions, the slides, and we're happy to answer questions that they may have.
Good question for staff at this time. Okay, it is a public hearing. Would the applicant have anything they want to say at this time?
Yeah, Scott Lewis, the current engineer and certainly representing the hearts in support of this various request. Technically, we're out of compliance with regulations. We acknowledge that there's a couple of items that we don't comply with. We would expect the Joyce office to suggest that you deny this recommendation because we aren't in compliance with those regulations. Basically, it comes, the main issue that we're talking about here today, it comes down to the fact that we have a building that is larger than five thousand square feet. And and that that opens up all kinds of forms apparently. We applied for the build, the building permit initially as a shop as it was described to us as being a shop. And I think the intent was it was a shop and it is a shop in our minds. There are two lifts inside the building and on those two lifts, we are not we, but the applicant performs service on residential or personal vehicle, I guess you would describe it as, with those two lifts. That activity occupies probably about two thousand feet of the of the shop. And our basic, our basic argument is that we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be penalized for the fact that we just built a larger building. And and that's and that's really what it's coming down to. Because the, if we were a smaller building, less than five thousand square feet, we we would be allowed to separate the shop from the residents and and get below the two use activities as one being agriculture, agriculture support and and also to do a commercial, small commercial business. But because we are greater than five thousand feet, we fall into this major commercial which throws us out of the regulation. So if there's questions there.
Questions, Mr. Lewis. For the public public. Yes, sir.
Speaker Picky, attorney for Larry Hart and Hart Family LLC, the owner of the property, the applicant. I would just like to ask, keep in mind a couple of things about this application. And as Mr. Lewis indicated, I think they understand obviously that what was on the original building permit is is not in conformance of what they eventually used it for, but that was their intent all along. It was unintentional mistake. They weren't trying to mislead anything. The operation, the business has been operating now for several years, apparently until this time without any objection or complaint. A lot of the vehicles they service on that in that shop are agricultural related vehicles, tractors, hauling trucks, that sort of business that's a large part of their business. But they do also perform repairs on other vehicles, passenger vehicles and so forth. The reason that building is the size it is and has the size doors it does and the large lifts is because the types of vehicles perform service on. I would point out that the staff report notes that there's no little or no impact on the surrounding agricultural operations or businesses in that area. Again, this business has been in operation for a while, doesn't appear to have any impact on the ag related uses in that neighborhood. Going, you, Mr. Dylan, did I stop going through the different requirements for the the variance? It's hard to argue those. I would point out though, in terms of the conditions of this, unique conditions of this property. One unique condition I think that does apply here is that because of the location of this building and this property, it's relatively isolated. So the impact on neighboring properties, neighboring residences is fairly isolated. If you look at the map provided by the staff that accompanies this report, you see there's actually a salvage yard less than about a half mile from this operation. Everything else is agriculture related and a few residences, but in the immediate vicinity of this property, there's very little or anything that's going to be impacted by this business. And again, just the fact that it's been operating for several years without objection is I think an important factor to bear in mind. As far as whether strict application of the regulations would deprive the applicant of the use of the property. Again, this building is constructed in a way specifically for this purpose and it serves a lot of agriculture related. It serves a lot of farmers in the area who have their vehicles taken there for repair and service. So if we take that away, say you can't use it for that purpose, got a very big empty building to say it's only going to be used for personal use really does deprive the owner of the logical use of that that building and that location. So I think there is a basis to support the variance and find in favor of it. If the commission is concerned about other potential major commercial activities that could be used if this variance and special use permit are granted, I think the owners are open to conditions that would restrict other uses under that classification. So if it's confined simply to auto repair, that type of business, it's already going on there. I think you could impose that condition and they'd be open to that. So again, I think there's there is a basis for granting this variance. The other thing I would offer and I know you missing a couple commissioners today, but if you're concerned about what this would do or if you're concerned about granting this variance and you have questions, one thing you might consider doing is delaying your decision until you can come out and visit the property yourself and see if yourself what kind of operation it is. Pretty nice operation in person. That's all I have.
For the public comment.
Hello, yes, this is Donna.
You do know, we do know that we have public comment online and I'm sorry I didn't state it earlier. I'm gonna take public comment from in the room and then we will move to the folks that have signed in online.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Floyd Derry, I'm an adjoining landlord. And we, the community depends heavily on Skip's ability to repair all our farmers' drive cars, pickups, trucks. And Skip does a really nice job with taking care of us. He's super good on decent pickups and and it's a very important part of our community to be able to take our stuff in there and have it be repaired and I just really appreciate his continued, being able to continue to take care of the community as like he does. He does tractors and farm equipment too, but a lot of stuff is farmers' cars and farmers' pickups and farmers' trucks. So it's a big part of the community and very necessary asset to our community.
Okay, thank you, sir. For the public comment from in the room. I need that something you want to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that it's, the the classification is where things are kind of hung up because the building is so large. The staff isn't allowed to go inside someone's structure to enforce how much of a building they might be using. So we have to classify it as the major because it's within a building larger than the eight thousand square feet. There are other classifications that did the square footage that they're proposing to make it available for them to continue doing what they're doing and get permitted for it just in another different classification.
What classification would those be?
We talked about ag support and minor commercial. Minor commercial business is under five thousand square feet. And they can do that. They just have to propose the structure being under five thousand square feet. This structure is existing in eighty seven hundred square feet with no way for the staff to enforce if they're using under five thousand square feet for over the years they're going to spread through the whole building. That's our basically. So there are options for them to continue and get permits for what they are doing. It's just this classification.
All right, well, I will go to online. We have a phone number of three zero seven. Three seven five seven five two three seven seven nine. Would you like to comment?
Yes, I would. This is Donna Cook Garland and I am part owner and land that is adjacent to this property. And I had a couple of questions. I did not receive notice.
If you could speak up, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, I did not receive notice that this was, the variance was in process until last week. So I did not have a chance to research the variance. And I had a couple of questions. When they applied for the building permit, did they intend to use this building for the repair shop? And did they apply for the building permit under false pretenses of using it for a storage area knowing all the time that it wasn't zoned for that? Or did this just turn into a development that they did use it for that? That is one question that I had.
Okay, ma'am, I'm really sorry, but we're just struggling to hear you. We're.
Okay, I'm really sorry. I am out of the country and I am calling in from out, out of the country. So I'm trying to talk as loud as I can. I am wondering how much of the property are they asking to rezone? Is it the entire one hundred and fifty four acres? Or is it just a partial amount around the shop?
Okay, we'll answer that question, we'll answer that question now before you go further. Can you answer that, Ms. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so this is not a rezoning? Yeah, it's it's just we're asking your permission to consider the applicant's moving forward with a special use permit for use that's not allowed in that zoning district.
Okay, did you, were you able to hear that, Ms. Cut?
Did you say they just wanted a special use permit that they're not doing a rezone?
Correct.
So my other question, I guess you did not hear, was when they applied for their building permit, did they do so by representing that the shop would be used for agricultural purposes? And then went ahead and used it for commercial purposes?
I can't answer that, I don't know if you can. I, you know, Mr. Chairman, I thought I heard Mr. Colpicky say that maybe their understanding was they wanted to use this as a mechanic shop. Our understanding was, well, it wasn't me, I believe it was Linda, but I think our our department's understanding that this shop would be used for personal use, not not for commercial use. There might have been a misunderstanding.
Do you have further comment, Ms. Cut?
Yes, I am concerned that this may turn into a property that will be used for vehicles that are waiting to be repaired and will start to look like a salvage yard and vehicles that are not repaired will be stored there. And this is a concern I have because of the possible contamination of the property then contaminating underground water, et cetera.
Okay, I'm gonna let the applicant, can the applicant address that concern, that question?
You know, there's a, there's an area of the shop, we tried to take photos of it on the west side of the shop where vehicles are parked. And basically, those are the vehicles that are in in the process of being repaired or have been repaired and people need to come pick their vehicles up. So we've allowed for some of that. The shop itself, related to environmental issues, it has a grease trap. It has a internal trench in it that collects water that comes off of the oils, et cetera. It goes into the grease trap before it is, before it is, goes out and basically goes into a similar to a leach field. But but so and all other oil is maintained on the site and Skip could answer this, but I believe it goes into a furnace and it's and it's burned off, is that correct?
Yeah, we have a couple of different neighbors that have furnaces in their shops. So that's where our waste oil goes to their furnaces.
I can't hear you, can you speak up?
That's that, our our waste oil goes to, we have some neighbors that have some some oil burning furnaces in their in their facilities. That's where our waste oil goes. We store them in poly tanks, so and then the storage tanks that are in the, okay, that's what we use.
And I think her other concern was visually, from from where I understand her house to be, we're basically north of that, we're actually behind a hill where if you look at it, you can only basically see the top of this shop, probably the top ten fifteen feet. Well, the thing is only only thirty feet tall, but but you, it's it's basically hidden behind trees and and it's secluded if you if you actually look at it.
Were you able to hear that, Ms. Cut?
Yes, I was. I just have one additional thing to add. I don't have a lot of confidence in the owner to actually not use this for a salvage yard because of the way that the building permit was obtained under false pretenses. I feel like that was done purposely. So that is the end of my comments. I'm very much against this variance. I do not want to see it happen and that is all I have to say. Thank you for letting me comment.
Okay, further comments from virtually?
This is Randy Cook. I'm the president and CEO of Cook Incorporated. Our land, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Cook.
Okay, our land is adjacent to the heart, the the shop and everything like that. It it actually is a property right next to it. The 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 bottom line that we're concerned about is the is the following of the EPA rules and guidelines as well as OSHA standards. A shop that large has to follow the OSHA standards. And what do they have available to ensure that they follow the EPA and the OSHA standards? That would be my first concern. My second concern is this, Frank Hart has a salvage, had started a salvage yard on the same properties. And I'm not sure that he got a variance or anything like that to do that because I under, I heard that there is a salvage yard there. I'll I'll let you address those two questions first.
Okay, would you mind, I mean, I see that the salvage yard is, you know, further up there in the north corner and that's been there for a while, hasn't it?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, it is permitted. Yes, and Mr. Chairman, it is permitted. They have a, I believe it's a little land use change permit for that, so.
So the salvage yard is is has been permitted and has been in operation for a while.
And it's owned by the hearts also. So that's why we have a concern that that this particular shop.
Considering that, sir, we're not considering that it's that that is already permitted. It's and I'm understanding from the applicant, it's a different heart. So we're not, we're that that's not what we're considering today.
That that being said, I think uh, my my sister who indicated that this is what we're concerned about is that the shop area will continue to morph into a salvage yard. And and the possibilities of controlling uh, oils and diesel and getting into the ground and possibly contaminating the groundwater is is a major concern to us. Uh, since we have the property adjacent to this, the facility they have uh, installed. And uh, what kind of controls will be put on that or an an oversight?
Well, if they are in violation of their variance or their S U P, it's brought to the county's attention and it's acted on accordingly. Can you would the applicant mind addressing the the concerns about a salvage yard?
Um, what I'd like to say is in the pictures we provided, you can see there's a few few vehicles outside of the building waiting to be worked on. That will vary a little bit. Sometimes there'll be more, sometimes there'll be less, but we we try not to get so many things just sitting there waiting all the time. Um, that's kind of an average on that. As far as the uh environmental stuff, we have a a trench in the floor of the shop to collect dirt, debris, grime, other stuff. We have one sump tank in the floor that the trench drains into, a second sump tank, and then a an oil, water, sand separated. It's not called an grease trap. From there, it it leaves the building into a groundwater leach field.
How is the how is the waste that doesn't leave the building, how is it disposed?
Um, periodically, we have to have it pumped out.
Okay, so is it is removed by a commercial service then?
Yes, field sanitation is what we use.
Right. And Mr. Cook, were you able to hear that?
Yeah, I heard it, but I'm uh, I'm still curious and there's their their grease trap. Is it uh, is it drained into a concrete grease trap or is it a earthen grease trap?
Okay, concrete is what the applicant is saying. And then it is it is periodically pumped out by a by a local sanitation company is what the applicant is sharing with us. Do you have further comments?
No, I just want to let you know that we're opposed to uh, to this. And 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 that's what we're trying to to uh, validate that we're in opposition to uh, for you for the uh, granting of this variance because of uh, the EPA and OSHA standards, we think, because if they violated their uh, the requirements when they built the building, sounds like they knowingly violated it, but I'm not in their mind. Then how do we know that, you know, they're coming with uh, all the statements that they're going to to follow the requirements that are should be levied upon them for this this size of building and for the oil, grease, diesel, uh, and and gasoline that that'll be in these vehicles. So we're again, Cook Corporation is opposed to this uh, this variance. And uh, I think Donna, who's the secretary treasurer, has indicated that and I'm the president and CEO and I I'm telling you that we're opposed to it and we're and our property is adjacent to the heart property.
You see that? Okay.
That's my that's all I have to say right now. I mean, we we will put together some formal documents. Unfortunately, this letter was sent to uh, one of the wrong members of our board and we didn't get this information till a couple days ago. That's why we don't have a formal response.
Understood, sir. Um, I'm sure it was sent to the address on record. Yeah, it was sent to the property tax address.
Yeah, it's changed. That is changed.
I'm sorry.
I don't have any, I don't have any further comments.
Okay, thank you. We have further public comment? Okay.
If I could just add, um, it's not uncommon for people to build structures and down the road, change the use in the structure. Just to clarify that and any of the um, the regulations for waste and stuff like that, if this variance is approved and if they apply for an S U P, those will be reviewed through the S U P process.
Okay. Any further public comment?
I'd just like to say one thing real quick. Um, when we built this building, it went up, the building was done in about ninety days. So I'm I think this is all just kind of an over, we it it's an oversight on our part. We didn't intend to not have the correct zoning and the correct permits and stuff in place. It's strictly just it when it when we built the building, it happened so quick. But I think it was just an oversight on our part. That won't happen today. Yeah, I know that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Derry. We're trying to wrap this up again.
At the time that this building was built, Skip was working for me. I repair farm equipment in my little farm shop and I farm. So they they really weren't, they weren't just building it for Skip to have a commercial building. He actually was working for me when they built the building and did for a couple of years after.
Okay. Any further public comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Keith Murray and I'm uh, probably the oldest one in the room and I've known the Hart family since they moved here in nineteen fifty-five. And we were really excited when they were going to put this shop up because uh, my oldest son was mechanicing on all of our equipment. But he was having trouble keeping up, so we encouraged Skip to to work on trucks because there's nobody else in the community of Woolwood that really works on trucks. And in town, there's really nobody that can get a semi truck and trailer in their shop. So that's why we encourage them to to make it long enough to get a whole rig in there and it's indoors. It it keeps everything clean of the concrete floor. It's a beautiful shop. If you drive by, you wouldn't think it was a shop because it's not like a metal building. It's got stone on it. It matches the house.
Yeah, we have pictures of it here.
A beautiful setup. And we're farmers and we don't see any problem with it being all the commercial. It's just kind of a fine line there, but we are not opposed to what they're doing there. They've really been a good family and a neighbor, but thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move second.
Move second to close the booth hearing. Those in favor? Aye. Aye. Gentlemen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I believe that that the variance, uh, I'm in support for for a few reasons. Going through the approval standards, uh, so many of the questions and I don't want to really change these because it it can be open for interpretation and I believe he in in nothing against that, but you're going by our rules, but in in his opinion, uh, for the answering him for reasonable use of harmony of land and all, um, I I I believe he he answered those, so he does it. My feelings that qualifies for the variance. So much of the questions within the variance standards are opinion. Uh, so in in his opinion, the owners and in my knowledge of the Woolwood area, I believe that the variance standards have been yeah. Uh, any special concerns can be addressed at the S U P. This is not an overdone deal today.
Yep.
Uh, so therefore, I guess I I move to approve the uh, variance. That's a paper for you.
We got it.
Okay. A variance request.
I'll I'll second that. The Georgia book shop, um, I know that a lot of farmers do do repair on cars and trucks. Uh, don't get approval, but you see hard farms, there's cars and trucks too, so you know, keep the automotive world going and and the farmers, I think, are indeed, so I'm definitely going to at least a variance request now before we get it to the S U P. So I'll second that with that. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the variance. Further discussion? Others in favor? Aye. Aye. Carry it. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thanks for showing up. But I love.
Colleen, you have another.
I figured this might run off.
Twenty twenty-nine seventy-nine.
Thank you. Yeah. Four hundred and forty-five. Yeah. Yeah, you just want to tell them. It's not a big, it's not a really.
This is chairman. Says this is more difficult to run than a track.
Yeah.
Are we done? Yep, we're done.
Okay.
Well, that could even get that great.
Thank you, guys. Okay, next we're going to visit about some dis requirements for the domestic water at the subdivision. Just a little background on this. The applicant noted for the approval of the subdivision, there were concerns raised with the uh, maybe the adequacy and and the water system or water wells out there. We asked a applicant to provide a water study to show that there'd be sufficient water. He did quite a bit of work, drilled some wells, did some tests, provided those to us. We're not a water experts. We fed those to Mr. Carl Tofogo, works for the Wyoming State Geologic Survey, was a hydro geologist. The comments that came back from Mr. Tofogo were that the information provided was not adequate. Didn't say one way or another where there's sufficient water, but the information provided was not adequate to show that there is sufficient information. There was sufficient water for this subdivision. Uh, we met again with the applicant publicly and um, asked if he would we could, we'd be willing to uh, to revisit that. We've since retained the services of a professional engineer. He has brought forth recommendations that he thinks would satisfy the question of whether there's sufficient water out there. That's kind of a long winded, but that's where we are and Joy has been working with the engineer and has compiled a list of recommendations and I think you're ready to present those today.
Thank you. So um, at your last meeting, the applicant was requesting additional information, essentially specificity as to what he wanted from him to provide adequate water. And so um, we have hired Tom Tilch, um, who is an engineer and geologist to review all the materials that have been provided to date and he responded and gave us some recommendations. Um, I provided his recommendations to you and from those, you selected the ones that you feel are are sufficient. Um, since we met last time also, the applicant has provided um, a new flat and they wanted this particular comment added. The comment or or note, I should say to the flat, the note is the availability and quality of puddle water is unknown. Sister may be required. So I just wanted to note that um, on the record. So um, one of the the concerns that has been brought forth is, you know, how come the board feels that you could do the staff for all this information? And I just want to revisit the statute because the statute is what drives your subdivision rule and your subdivision rule must follow, uh, for major subdivisions in particular, um, eighteen five three oh six. And so under eighteen five three oh six A, little B I, it's very clearly stated that a study evaluating the water supply system proposed for the subdivision and the adequacy and safety of the system is necessary. And so we're asking, uh, you're asking obviously for the applicant to provide evidence of those things. Under that same subsection, um, A, capital A, identi- identification of the type of water supply system proposed to surface subdivision and identification of the entity or entities responsible for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the proposed facility. Uh, we skip capital letter B because um, it is for systems that are not individual onlot wells. And we move to capital letter C, where individual onlot onlot wells are proposed as the water supply system. A report submitted by the subdivider demonstrating the safety and adequacy of the water supply system shall address a minimum of following. And it goes on to this five items, um, total gallons per day estimated for subdivision, information relative to the potential availability of water, quality of groundwater, which could include drilling logs, uh, new test wells, things like that. Documentation that the supply system will be compatible with and not adversely affected by sewage systems proposed for the subdivision. List of all surface and groundwater rights which will be used or will likely be affected. And then plans for mitigation of water rights conflicts which will likely result from the use of water within a subdivision. And then capital letter D, where individual onlot wells are proposed, the words no proposed central water supply system shall appear on the flat. So that's the statutory um, guidance that's provided and further, um, statute does say that in eighteen five three fifteen provisions minimum, if any board has or enacts resolutions or regulations which impose requirements on subdividers or subdivisions which are more restrictive than the provisions of this article, the authority to act such enact such local resolutions or regulations being hereby granted, the local provisions are not superseded by the provisions of this article. Nothing in this section shall be deemed to allow any board to uh, deemed to allow any board to impose requirements that contribute the exemptions from this article as provided eighteen five three oh three. So with that said, um, Mr. Tilch provided us some some information and from that, uh, five areas were addressed. Number one, to address subsurface conditions and potential groundwater production. An additional well in the eastern portion of the subdivision would better define the subsurface conditions across the entire site, but it may be assumed the subsurface is fairly consistent across the site. An action item resulting from that is the applicant shall drill an additional test well in the eastern portion of the subdivision and report on the lateral extent of the subsurface conditions across the subdivision. The second action item related to that, the applicant shall conduct more accurate pump tests on newly installed wells on the property to improve time drawdown and time rebound. Number two, to address water usage, a water balance should be performed to show domestic well usage will not impact the aquifer. An action item falling out of that, the applicant shall perform a water balance to show that domestic well usage will not impact the aquifer, taking into account domestic usage, precipitation recharge, septic system recharge, and any other potential recharge source. Number three, to address water quantity, a domestic well usage usage limit should be placed on the flat and meters are recommended to show domestic usage limit is not exceeded. From this, the action item, the applicant shall place the following condition on the final flat. Domestic wells on lots in this subdivision shall not be used for irrigation purposes unless the applicant can show a show through a water balance that irrigation uses will not attack the aquifer. Number four, to address potential impacts of small wastewater systems on water quality, onsite septic systems will be discharging into the O'Neal Aquifer and wells will be pumping from the O'Neal Aquifer, Lot Two, well specifically. Action item number one, the applicant shall place the following condition on the final flat. Base of small wastewater system leach field shall not be placed at a depth deeper than nine than thirty inches. Action item number two, the applicant shall place the following note on the final flat. Installation of domestic wells at depths penetrating the Woolwood formation is recommended. And number five, uh, to address the presence of natural springs, the applicant and the applicants represented. And number five, uh to address the presence of natural springs, the applicant and the applicants represented have stated there are natural springs located on the property. The locations of the springs have not been identified to date. Action item falling from that is the applicant shall identify the locations of natural springs on the property on the final flat.
Do you have anything to questions, comments at this point? I know you guys just got these, that was, we wanted to do this in public session, um is the applicant. You have any comments at this time?
Well, one initial comment, like, we're not, we're not super prepared for this, but all along, we've 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 carried along the water rights on this property. These lots are four and a half to eight, over eight acres in size. We've addressed the D Q requirements related to septic systems and we have shown through their study that our septic systems will not impact adjacent neighbors. Uh we're gonna have to comply with the separation requirements between the well and septic system. And so all of that is going to be, is it's gonna be just just by part of the regulations that are already in place with D Q. There's gonna be these separations, et cetera. But the fact that we've carried along all these water rights, um we are in the process preparing plans that will have a raw water system that will go throughout the entire site. Uh those people will, the water will come up to taps basically and people will do use sprinkler systems to irrigate with. So it's it's not intended that these individual wells will be used for irrigation. We can't foresee what other people may do. We could put a restriction that it couldn't be used for irrigation on the on the plat, but I I just wouldn't. I wouldn't understand why someone would pump out of their own well, which which may get twenty gallons a minute compared to what you can get out of an irrigation system to irrigate with. Other, these other things we'll try and comply with.
And some of this, some of this is obviously low hanging fruit.
Yeah.
You know, we did, and we and we knew, we're just taking the recommendations that were provided to us by Mr. Pilch. We, you know, took some of them out, you know, we're not, we're not gonna require meters. I mean, I'm I'm not, I guess I shouldn't say we, I gotta back up on that, but there's some low hanging fruit. You know, there's a couple of substantial ones, and that's the water balance test, et cetera, that was addressed in the first uh first two items. So. I mean.
I saw you shaking your head with the meters. Is that something that we should have to do?
I I don't, I mean, I personally, I personally, if if this moves forward, I would not be in favor of metering every single one of those wells. And I was pretty sure that you were gonna have your irrigation rights carried through, but if we, you know, if we just stick it on the plat, it's no big deal.
I don't see a problem with that. The only thing that people um would use their water for out of their well, I mean, in my mind, once the irrigation is turned on, there's obviously a turn off period, but um I know some people like to, you know, maybe get a jump on their their lawn or their trees in the winter, you know, in the fall, put water to their trees, but you know, I mean, something we could put in and I guess it's
And it says.
It's at their risk to use a hose and do it.
If your water balance shows, which it might show, that it's not gonna be a an issue, then then it wouldn't have to go on.
I mean, I don't mind having it on, but that's that's the only downfall, is you see those spring and fall times when people, you know, they might throw a hose out there and then somebody complains in the subdivision. But um you know, I I just, the only, most everything actually you had on there so that I'd kind of come up with in my mind. But um you know, when we're talking about five hundred gallons a day per household, when you when you neck that down to a well's production uh and and three hundred and fifty gallons would would be the household use, three a hundred and fifty gallons of a five hundred gallon usage would be for outside. So if we took the outside away, really, it'd be lower than this. But we'd only be talking about point five two gallons per minute, a well production in a sixteen hour period. Because I figured eight hours, people are sleeping, so you got eight hours of well recovery, but to get to five hundred gallons a a day, a well's only producing point five two gallons per minute. I mean, we have wells producing a hundred, we have a well producing twenty five. Um obviously, there's water there and I think this, some of the study that's on there will help ease your mind to get to that, so.
So.
Of one point of clarification, um in earlier discussion, um there was talk about these particular tests potentially being done by a licensed geologist or hydrogeologist. I didn't know where the board was at with that particular aspect of the test requirements.
Well, I'm, I would assume that they, that that's who would do this, I mean, that's who you hired to do this, I don't know that. I mean, is is that what you're gonna do?
Well, I mean, I do want a lot of, what we've discussed is that uh we would, we would, we would. What we've discussed is adding two additional pilot wells that we could measure what the influence of the well was. And in the data, what we were going to do is we're gonna put a a monitor that monitors the water level in the data, in the well, in the satellite well, if you will, and it just records continuous data for twenty four hours. So we were just going to get that data, we are gonna have Christiansen well drilling pump and measure the flow through a flow meter so we could see, we knew what the flow was, that he was pumping at the time. And we were going to provide all that data to a geologist to analyze. That's that's how we were going to.
They would take the report, but it sounds like you guys would prefer a well on the eastern part and then just drawdowns on the ones that were existing.
That's that's my understanding, if if, and you might have to get with Joy and talk to her about what Mr. Pilch, because he's the one we're gonna ask to Sure. To evaluate the data that you guys provide. So we felt it good to reach out to him and say, what would you like to see? And that's what he came back with.
Well, what what we were hoping, I guess, with Scott was, you know, Scott's a licensed engineer, he actually worked for the firm that we're gonna send the data to. We were hoping to be able to use Scott to utilize for about four dollars for us. And uh we got uh Christiansen drilling, he has all the stuff to do, the pump test, to get exact numbers. He actually acquired that stuff for me from his dad. And uh we were hoping to be able to do the drawdown tests and then supply the data to the engineer, have them make the report for you.
Okay, Joy, is that?
Yeah, I will get clarity from Tom and whether it should be all the new wells on the property, because it just says the new wells.
Well, it says the newly installed wells, so I would say newly is a plural.
Right, but I assume that meant the eastern one too, so I I would rather get clarification.
Okay.
Okay. So what we need, what we have in front of us is uh we make an official decision.
If I can make one other comment, so as part of the record.
Yes, sir.
If I understand what Tom is asking, he's not even suggesting that we install satellite wells.
Correct.
He's he's just asking that we do a pump test in the wells that we're using, we're eventually gonna use for drinking water. Is, am I missed?
He's asking you to install a new well in the eastern side.
Yes.
So drill an additional test well in the eastern portion of the subdivision and and report on the lateral extent of the subsurface condition across the subdivision.
Okay, so we would do that by by as we drill the hole, we would have a lithology in that in that.
You're talking.
Yeah, okay, all right. But the the basic question is, I and I mean, we need to kind of have it confirmed is that we are gonna have the, if you would, the the water well that we're gonna use for drinking water here and we're gonna install a monitoring well twenty feet away. But from his, from his description, I got the impression he didn't even ask for a monitoring well. And I just want to clarify that because it's a cost difference for us.
Joy, would you like to comment on that?
I can ask Tom.
Well, we need to, we we need to make a decision on on what we're recommending today.
Oh, my understanding of he wanted um time drawdown and time rebound on the wells that are currently there.
Okay.
But I don't know if you can achieve that without a pilot well.
Well, you can do a time drawdown because our our equipment would just be in that well when we're drawing it down. And when we turn the pump off, we would just record what it, how it rebounded.
Yeah, that's.
I don't see any, I don't see any, and I stand in all the stuff I read from from Tom, I didn't see anything about about.
Additional satellite mining.
Yeah, the only additional well I saw was one on the eastern side, okay.
So do you want me to ask that question?
Well, I, yeah, we're we're actual today. So I'm acting on the recommendations that were brought forward and provided to us by Mr. Pilch. Any comments? You need to have a motion to uh approve these recommendations. So move. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve these recommendations provided to the applicant to bring uh further uh information to us. Excited to Mr. Pilch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Hey.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
And you, Joy, you don't need a resolution number due to this, doesn't have a resolution.
This will just be for recommendation. Okay, we've got a public hearing coming up eleven fifteen. I guess we'll just wait till eleven fifteen and let's, yeah, we'll wait. It shouldn't take long, it'll take a while for me to read it.
Joy, I need that word for word.
I have a copy of it, but I will read the letter. You, I have, I'm just reading the the letter that was provided in to us into the record.
When was that Mr. Pilch hired by the county?
He has done work for the county off and on with our with our landfill for years. And he, we we retain his services on this shortly after the last um meeting.
Okay. And how much county paid him?
I do not know, you'd have to check with uh with Joy.
Okay.
Probably too dang much, but you know. Actually, I, he did, he got to work then fairly quickly. You know, I just look at where we're headed with water in this county and some conditions in this county and that's what we sure want to make sure we get it right.
Mr. Chairman, I have that I E C letter.
I've got it here in front of you.
If you want me to save. I'm happy to save.
Oh.
Yes, forward here. Request for. A request for this.
Should've got all the commissioners.
Yeah, they lose them.
Oh, okay.
They delete them.
Okay.
Aaron Anderson and Terry Wolf.
Oh, they, yeah. They're lost. So they need that space.
Might start with, this is Molly Norber, the new, they're probably looking for something, excuse me.
Good, does she stop being new?
Oh, we'll give her another day or two and she'll be the old Molly. We are loving working on this, it's great.
All right, we're gonna open up the uh public hearing on Inductance Energy Corporation zoning map amendment. The applicant has withdrawn its uh application for a zoning map amendment. This is a letter received on December second. Here, I believe was received in our office and Colleen's office. And I'll read it to the record just for for the record, December second, two thousand twenty one, to County Clerk and to whom it makes concern. C C to the Park County Board of County Commissioners and Planning Staff, I E C Real Estate Holdings LLC, rotation or parentheses quotation, I E, end of quotations, parentheses. Hereby withdraws his zoning map amendment application. Parenthesis quotations, end of quotations, parentheses, application, dated July second, two thousand twenty one. At this time, I E is not prepared to move ahead with this application. Please remove the item as title from the commissioners' December seventh, two thousand twenty one meeting agenda. Thank you for your time. Signed, Richard Hawley, Vice President of Business Development, Government Liaison. So. Second, moving to second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close the carry. Go.
Thank you.
I I forgot to have a public comment.
Do you want me to put in the minutes that you called for public comment?
No, there was no.
And do you need anything for this one, to meet resolution?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No comment. I had no comment too. I have. Is Kathy out there?
She is.
Okay.
Oh, somebody forgot to tell.
It's been wrapped, we have a change draft after very, very far. Uh that question will be.
So sorry, I lied, we've got three.
Oh.
Three names.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought there were four. Three different companies.
Okay. Come on in.
Okay. What happened to your?
Fired him. They're wanting to give it to you for nothing, we give them.
Do you all have a copy?
We have a copy of the lease on.
Perfect.
As long as that's the the uh the most current one.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Always, always saying, saying, yes.
Yeah.
So.
Do you want me to wait for the others or they're not here today?
They're not here.
Oh, okay. Then come back. What's your bylaws, say your quorum is, no kidding.
Three, pretty good.
Um so the the reason we're back is um we have made few revisions to the to the lease and there are things that we discussed last time. One is we eliminated what was section four, so we actually got renumbered. Um but section four was about signs and we just took, ended up taking it out because the part that didn't apply to us, um it left it with this with a section that said something like signs within the cafe are, that are holding within the cafe are permitted. Well, you know, that just sort of seemed intuitive, so I figured it was better to be silent on signs than to have something that was like a single sentence about signage. Um so that that went away and the other issue that we discussed last time was the maintenance and repair of, really not the maintenance, but the repair and replacement of um the equipment required to run the cafe. And that was actually addressed by saying there's, it's in section of six, under repairs and maintenance, and um it was actually added that the things that the lessor is responsible for, including walls and uh whatnot. Um it says, including equipment that is specific to the cafe area for the lessing use for normal cafe business operations. Basically, what that means is that should uh the Hobart mixer all of a sudden stop working, then the county is responsible for taking a look at that and seeing what would need to happen with that in terms of repairs or handle replacement. Um it actually works out that we were there the other day and the freezer isn't working. Um so um I know Mr. Gowers is checking into that, he's had somebody take a preliminary look. Um and he's gonna have a refrigeration person um take a look at that as well. But he mentioned that there was some sort of a a short that he thought was part of that.
So we would, we visited about that this morning, he's gonna take a look at that. He's also gonna circle back with you and see exactly how much freezer space you're going to need. Um that's gonna be extremely pricey item for the county to uh to replace.
Does it need to be replaced?
Well, it probably will, so he's gonna be, he's gonna reach out to you and see.
We we have a meeting this afternoon at two fifty.
Yeah, and this this the lease, I'm good with the lease, but I'm, and I don't know if these guys are are good, but our attorney is.
Right, I understand.
And we know that you were, you'd like to get going sooner than later.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I guess what I'm going to suggest is a a motion that that we can approve this lease contingent upon approval by our county attorney and an agreement on a working freezer for.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the the repair of the maintenance. Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the, the repair of the maintenance. I, I have no problem with the agreement. However, I would like to see something in there that, that this pertains to normal wear.
Yeah.
And, and recovery. If the same mixer gets knocked off the counter and breaks, we don't replace it.
That, uh, yes, I believe that that's, that, you know, I'm not a lawyer.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm worried it needs to be in there, but that's.
Right.
We agree with that, and it wouldn't mind something like that.
So you, you're good with adding that in?
Yes.
Okay.
And my feeling about this is that this is for one year, you know?
Right.
We can't assume responsibility for equipment. I don't know how, how long that kid should spend there, but it's.
I understand. But if the calafront refrigerator gets broken because somebody bumped it, that's not where.
And actually, that is in the lease that says that's our responsibility. People that are our people or people we're supposed to be responsible for, if they break something, that is definitely our responsibility. Yeah. Um, I think this is more the things, you know, there is this, uh, thing that goes with the lease. And I, I believe I sent it, it's called attachment A, and it lists really like the big equipment that's there. That's what we're gonna look at, um, as well this afternoon and just to make sure that all, everything's in working order.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we move on with the motion? And also on, uh, an agreement on the freezer. Uh, I mean, if you, basically what we're looking at is, we don't know what the repair is gonna be.
Sure.
And, or can you get by with the, of, of, of temperature?
A, a, a smaller freezer than what is actually, because that one is a.
Exactly, if that one costs two thousand dollars for repair, and we can replace it with a nine hundred dollar brand new Kenmore. I mean, I, I guess the question is, are you willing to accept the, the lease if you can negotiate a freezer?
Yes, I think we can come to some sort of.
Okay, so you just make, you make that part of your motion.
Trying to figure out how to do it, because our lease says that we're responsible for equipment. Uh, first.
Yeah, and I don't know if we just need to have the county attorney add that, or we just say that we have. I, I don't know how you do that. Um, but what I don't wanna do, you know, you'll forgive me, but I don't want this to bounce back and forth between lawyers for the next four weeks. That's my problem.
No. I think we're, I think you get on that no matter what happens, because we'll give them an operating freezer. They don't be the one that's over there.
That's right.
Okay.
I, I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, take some of the lease agreement pending county attorney approval.
Moving second, further discussion.
One thing is you're not gonna give us like a college dorm freezer, you know?
I can listen, Mike.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
That's all I think, I mean, because freezer space is gonna be important to us, because, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, you say favor. If we don't come up with a working freezer, you don't have to sign the lease.
Okay. That sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close the carries.
Okay, so, uh, now, this is just, I'm asking for your advice. What we had planned, because I, um, just safely thought that everything would be done today, a few weeks ago. Um, so, we are planning to do a sneak peek on December the twenty-first, that's a Tuesday. Um, do you think that that's a reasonable, uh, that we can get it back from the lawyers and we can go ahead and publicize it and all that kind of stuff for the twenty-first of December?
I am gonna go, when I step out of here, I'll visit with Mr. Scory. He's been, he's been swamped, he's been down some staff and had some staff out, so, you know, he's just been covered up with stuff. So we, but I will check with him and I'll have, I'll have Molly check with him.
Okay.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to.
Right.
To approve it today, continued upon.
Right, but if, if he's not gonna have time to look at it until, you know, the end of the month, then that pretty much would mean that we wouldn't be able to do that. So I just wanna know, I mean, uh, you know, no one's gonna die if we don't have this sneak peek, you know, that's, that's fine. Um, but I just, we also need time to publicize it, so, you know, either, either way, if he thinks he can't do it, then we'll just.
I think it's fair, I think it's fair for us to give you an answer.
Okay, that sounds great.
Make sure that happens.
Okay. And if we do have it on the twenty-first, we wanted you guys to be sure to, uh, know that you're invited. So, well, we have whatever date we have.
Okay.
We've won. All right.
Happy.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Next time. Yeah, Brian Edwards.
Oh, do you like them? Do you need some to open them up?
Yes, and you've got a nice.
How's Mr. Wilson, do you know who was sitting there?
Oh, you guys doing this topic? And it would have been during, uh, well, that would have been during the heart variance. You can look at, oh, we, no, we don't film that.
No, I, I forgot his code. Oh, maybe it's a lady's code, I'm not sure.
Wait a second, will it fit me?
I don't know, right? You can check the pockets. It's the one that's in.
Take it like. All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So today we're opening bids for, uh, track excavators for both the road bridge and the landfill division. And then we're also doing an articulated dump truck for the, uh, for the. First ones from haunted equipment. We did receive, uh, looks like three bids for each, three for the excavators and three for the artic. The first one's haunted equipment. If you've got your form, you should be looking at the blue square form. Uh, or the first of the machine.
Squares or rectangles?
Rectangles, okay.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're all same page.
Yeah, fir- first one is the smaller excavator, so if you see the way that form is.
Yeah, now it's, now it's not blue anymore. Yellow.
Okay. I was going with the pink, because there's a pink blue square.
Oh, the blue square on the corner.
I'm here, the, the excavators, blue is yellow.
Trying to help using to super not, or to simple.
Forget to issue the grant.
Okay, so first one, the machine was, this is for smaller machine, thirty thousand to thirty-nine thousand pound. Uh, haunted bid for a John Deere one sixty E. Uh, their bid price is two hundred nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. And they, on the buyback for that, they listed, uh, for the two-year, a hundred ten thousand. In three years, eighty thousand. Five-year, sixty thousand. Those are three thousand hours, forty-five hundred hours, seventy-five hundred hours. Three, or two, three, five. Okay, on the, uh, on the larger machine, which is forty-five, fifty thousand, she they did a two hundred G John Deere track excavator. Bid price for the machine, two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars, twenty-nine cents. The buyback price, they listed for two-year, a hundred fourteen thousand, for three thousand hours. Eighty-four thousand, for forty-five hundred hours. That's the three-year buyback. For the five-year buyback, fifty-four thousand dollars, seventy-five hundred hours.
Brian, those numbers, right? I thought that we had, started dealing with a thousand hours per year. Would have been two, three, and five.
Yeah, two, three, and five.
Two, three, and five. Well, he's probably not using the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, maybe.
You use the.
Yeah, it looks like he might have used the sheet that was before.
Okay, I just wanted to try to.
Yeah, I believe what was written in here, but you're right.
Uh, trade offered for the two thousand three John Deere one sixty CLC machine, thirty-three thousand five hundred. That's an offer trade for that existing machine we have. And then they did list the delivery date of a hundred and eighty days. It delivered to Cody. It says earlier delivery may be possible depending on what, as many are ordered.
Chairman, said the trade offered of either machine?
I guess, that's the, either way, we would exercise. The way we did approach this was whether we buy a, uh, the, the smaller machine, the larger machine, or choose smaller machines or larger. So we, we wrote the bids, wrote the bid specifications where we have some flexibility.
The trade is offered regardless.
Regardless of. For more. It's correct. Give me a focus. Uh, this is TV.
Just.
Cat bill.
Cat bill.
Cat bill dealer. So first for the smaller machine, thirty pounds, thirty-nine thousand pounds, we call it machine number one. It's a cap, three seventeen excavator. Bid price, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred nine dollars, eighty-three cents. And they were correct, of the, uh, buybacks, the first one on the two-year buyback, a hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. That's a two thousand hour, thousand hours a year. Uh, three-year buyback, a hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred. For three thousand hours. Uh, five-year buyback, a hundred thousand one hundred, or five thousand. Okay, for the machine number two, the larger machine, three hundred, that's a three hundred twenty cap excavator. Bid price, two hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-six dollars thirteen cents. A two-year buyback, uh, guaranteed buyback would be a hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred, two thousand hours. Three-year buyback would be a hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred, three thousand hours. Five-year buyback would be a hundred eleven thousand three hundred, five thousand hours. Yeah, TV offered or trade for our two thousand three John Deere one six CLC machine, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars. They put a delivery date, they said the week of April eighth. It's very tight.
Um, and that should be sooner than that, but I'm giving myself a little cushion.
April eighth is, uh, hey, they have doubt, we'll lift that over. Okay, the, the last deal of the excavator is for Tri-State equipment. They offer offered Obo equipment. The machine, the number one, the smaller machine, is a EC one six zero E. Bid for the, uh, for that machine is a hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars, zero cents. The two-year buyback is a hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars, zero cents. Three-year buyback, a hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars, zero cents. And the five-year buyback, a hundred nine thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars, zero cents, for five thousand hours. And their bid for the larger machine, forty-five, fifty thousand machine, two hundred seven thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars, zero cents. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a model EC two twenty.
Can you repeat that price, please, Brian?
Uh, two hundred seven thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars, zero cents. There's guaranteed buyback, two years, a hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars, for two thousand hours. Buyback to three years, a hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars, zero cents, that's three thousand hours. Then their buyback to five years, a hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars, for five thousand hours. They did offer forty thousand dollars trade for the two thousand three John Deere one sixty CLC machine. Their delivery date, August first, two thousand twenty-one.
Twenty-two, twenty-two? Twenty-two is what I'm gonna say, it does say twenty-one though?
Nope, I want it now, man.
Yeah, Brian, you should be able to meet the June fifteenth delivery dates, but that penalty law scared the hell out of us, so.
Gotcha.
We added some law.
Gotcha, okay. Sounds good. Can you tell me, uh, how old our one sixty is, their trade, and how many hours are on it?
Um, it's an old three, if it's the hours.
Fifty-six.
Five thousand forty-two hours. That was, that's November first, which is not.
That's a road.
That's a road.
Yeah, the machine, correct.
But the, uh, the success of our auction, that we had forty thousand trade good? Or could we maybe do better if we did a hot?
I, I'd like to look at that a little bit more, that's not a bad price for that.
Yeah.
That. But, but I'd like to look at that more before we come over to the compensation. We'll, we'll evaluate that. Next, uh, we have the articulated dump truck.
We didn't give them a talk.
No, I, I was talking to them a lot, I thought they were gonna submit a fair. So haunted equipment, it was for the articulated dump truck. Uh, so this is the, for a new John Deere two sixty E model articulated dump. These are like the twenty-yard, kind of the smaller age class for the, uh, particularly off, off-road type dump truck. Uh, bid price, four hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred seventy dollars, ninety-seven cents. They did not list buyback for three thousand, forty-five hundred, or for the two-year, three-year, or five-year. So not applicable. They also, um, could not guarantee a delivery date, they said to be determined at time of order. Although, I know some of these equipment and trucks, like you've got it to a, a, there's some uncertainty in the market, so. Yeah, this one's the cat for TV, it's a seven twenty-five articulated dump truck.
What'd you say?
Uh, seven twenty-five, eight-eight, articulated dump truck. Uh, bid for new truck, four hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars, fifty-two cents. Two-year buyback, at two thousand hours, they listed two hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Three-year buyback, two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred, at three thousand hours.
How many hours?
Uh, three thousand hours. And then the five-year buyback, a hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred, at five thousand hours. Delivery date is week of, uh, two thirty.
Brian, I'm confused on those hours too, didn't we drop that down, the fifteen hundred hours a year? Originally started at fifteen thousand for five year.
Yeah, the 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 five year award is seventy five. Yeah, you're you're right.
Oh, but.
Isn't that?
I missed that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we don't have the.
I don't, no. We can chat, yeah, I, yeah. I couldn't go out fifteen thousand hours anyways. I go, I quoted the ten thousand. We had a little title of awards for the five year. It should have been seventy five hours for the five years, for five year awards. That I could be. Yeah, we had a. So the last one is the, uh, for Tri-State equipment out of Billings, it's a Volvo. Eight thirty G. Bid for the new truck, four hundred seventy three thousand five hundred. Yeah, this, oh, sorry. Yeah, four hundred seventy three thousand five hundred. This one has the correct hour, so this is the adequate one. Buyback to two years, three hundred fifteen thousand five hundred. That's three thousand hours, two year buyback. Three year buyback, two hundred sixty three thousand five hundred, forty five hundred hours. And then the five year buyback, hundred seventy eight thousand five hundred, or seventy five hundred hours. The delivery date is, uh, August first, two thousand twenty two. So Mr. Chairman, what I guess we might do is, uh, the articulated dump trucks are just equipment for us, so we will really take our kind of the sculpture piece. And then, uh, we got some options, there wasn't to do on the excavators, so we might go back. If you are planning to compete next Tuesday.
We are competing, but we, if you think that we need to, uh. Um, if we, if you think we need to act fast, we can.
It's not so much that we need to, it's just you see the thing would be marketed, and if we have, sooner we can get an order, the better, but if we have to wait another week, it's not.
You can just talk with Molly, with our, I know our agendas might be stacked up.
Yeah, but for sure, we can get it in on the last two days of the week.
Yes, okay.
That's what we do.
Molly says, okay.
Our.
Marty the dog.
Yeah, it's gonna take.
You're in the doghouse already?
Whoa. You're in trouble.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Brian, I thought you said your aim was you didn't even care if he got up.
Well. That's true. That's probably a little the dog house.
Yes, sir. You told me.
Sure, why not, we'll just sit here and rest a bit.
Say it again. Boom, seconded. Further discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
I have one quick question for you, and it's not this. Essentially, you know about the Christmas luncheon on the twenty first, are you guys good with that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't respond, I'm.
No, nobody's responding.
I mean, I'm good with it, but I don't know if I'll be here.
Oh, and that's, I mean.
Oh, no, I will be here, no, Clint first is right, yeah, I'll be here.
And still like, can we just, like, well, we'll do it from like eleven to two, like we always do, like, you guys will plan on, can we?
Yep. Yep. Let us know when we, oh, yeah, since I'm already here.
So we may not hold anything this year, we have about a thousand. But what we're thinking is maybe, so here's our thought, let me know what you think, we're thinking maybe like a taco bar, or maybe, uh, else we tend to make some sandwiches.
Which that's a terrible.
That's the thing, you know, Warhol has phrasions, one goes to all this course, and it has. Oh, okay, I'm gonna ask Deb Carroll. Wait, you wanna provide the meat?
We don't have to tell me that's coming around to me.
Okay, sure.
You don't want to. I can provide, you don't mind, El.
When we were thinking of making pizzas in the summer, in the park, over summer. So we were gonna go big and all my, um, everything.
Yeah, let me get your tacos, let me know how much ground beef.
Okay. Seventy five pounds.
Seventy five pounds.
I'm just kidding.
I know where the extra money goes. Quite the runner of Christmas, that.
Yeah, right? Well, these, maybe we should have everybody steak, so he's furnished with meat.
See you, CJ, see you later.
Take care.
I really wish Brian could consider a particular.
Are they out there?
Yes.
What's wrong with that?
Uh, we can't sign. Because we just don't, we, I mean.
Yeah, we can't.
Really won't use that many hours. From the price of a brand doing.
Well, we didn't get that many hours out of that John Deere.
No, that's road bridge.
Oh, this, oh, this is, this is, this is. This isn't Kathy Liscum's.
To me, there's the no brainer on the head, on the head, for smaller.
Yeah, what you think?
Does she, since we did that contention approval, does she, do we need to sign?
Nope. We will.
What do you need yet for that?
What we'll do is, uh. Is the earliest she might see it is, is the, uh. I don't know how we do that.
What's that?
Well, we got, thankfully, if we approved that lease contingent upon, um, score, score ex approval.
Right, so what we'll probably do is on the fourteenth or the twenty first, we'll just put it in consent agenda, that score can prove the lease and the board sign. So once you get approval from him, you guys.
Well, yeah, but she's trying to work, she's trying to get stuff done.
Oh.
By the twenty first, the fourteenth might be the earliest she gets it in her hands. Is what I'm.
Yeah.
Well, I tell you what, if he if he approves it, call each one of us, because we already approved the lease, Joe and and Dossie will be both signed, because they were. They were absent.
Put them as assets.
And we use stamps.
Yes, we use their stamps.
Yeah, so you would, you might touch and base with, uh, Brian about when he thinks that might be, he might. And if he says, I'm not gonna look at it until, you know, next year, then let her know.
Okay.
But also fill in on why she's wanted, when she's wanted. Well, hello. Do I have to sign that way?
I don't know why I came in like that, but.
You need anything from me? Okay. That's Canada.
You are?
Worsens, sir.
Wow.
And then we'll let my son go with me, because his last shot was within fourteen days of when we're gonna cross the border.